Start recording. Welcome to my final meeting as the User Council Chair and whoever follows me's first meeting, and hopefully somebody does follow me so it doesn't turn into what it did before I took over where Perry was the chair until like September or October. So, did everybody who's present and accounted for have a chance to look over the May meeting minutes? Does anybody have any corrections or deletions or anything they'd like to make to them? Alright, a quiet group as usual. So can we go ahead and approve the May 2016 minutes then? Does anybody like to make a motion to do that? Okay, Erin. Okay, Erin made a motion. I don't know who that was who also made a motion. One of you can be the second, I suppose. So, all in favor of approving those minutes? Okay. Any objections since everybody's being quiet on approving? Okay, well, hearing no objections, I'll just consider them approved then. And I did have a couple of ayes before I asked for any people who didn't approve. I guess we can go ahead and go through the committee reports then. Should we start with Brent since we usually start with Brent?
That would be fine.
Hey. Okay. Well, I could start actually, since it's committee, I could do, that's just the general report. I could do the report for the Circulation Committee.
Okay.
Yeah, the Circulation Committee's been meeting regularly. It's been, generally speaking, the second or the third Tuesday of the month. And those meetings are posted, sage lib.org. As soon as you log in as staff, you'll see it in the kind of middle section, there'll be a date category. And as well as if you go to the Circulation menu, you'll be able to see the minutes and transcripts and kind of notes that get taken as well during those meetings. We've been discussing a lot of things. Sometimes it's been a little smaller group, so the meetings have been a little more kind of truncated. But there's been a lot of talk about, kind of, we've talked about the holds training, things that are going on with search, as well as kind of notices. And, yeah, we're also gonna finally, hopefully, get that holds training up. I keep getting derailed with some other things, but I'm really pushing to get that finished. Yeah, I think it's been pretty well, and I really heartily would have done, or heartily asked people to come and visit. It's pretty quick and you can just pop in an earphone and listen. You don't have to be an active participant, although that's always nice. Yeah. I think that's all I've got. The meetings, the minutes and everything should be up to date as well on there. Although the last one, I forgot to click record on the video, so the video is missing, and that's my fault. So that's about it for me.
Okay. A cataloging committee did meet in June. Those minutes will be up on the web soon. Basically, our topics of discussion were manga series and audience level. So it was a shorter meeting. We didn't have a lot of agenda items. We did decide that we were gonna go back to meeting every other month. And so, our next meeting will be at the beginning of August.
Circulation Committee? Well, we already did the Circulation Committee. Is there anything for the Courier Committee?
The Courier Committee did meet. We went over our procedures document, the new revised edition, and that is very close to being, I think we were just checking, doing a final run-through to make sure that we hadn't made any mistakes, but that'll be published very soon. And so, ongoing progress in that committee as well.
Okay. Okay. And then, there, oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, this is so, sorry, it might be a little loud. I'm kind of in the volunteer room right now. I could just run, since I don't see a kind of bullet point, I guess, for it, real quickly through that systems update, because I know I don't want to bog down people with it. And I can just point out to more information sources if you want to know more.
Okay.
Since that's kind of a committee, I guess.
Okay.
So, there's been some extensive research and kind of work done with our indexes and search with Evergreen, specifically right now with title searches. I know there's been issues with kind of punctuation and how that's been normalized. That should be, as far as I know, all resolved right now. I guess this kind of melds into the cataloging committee stuff, but it has always helped too to have that two-four-six, if you can put it in as an alternate title, because that does get indexed as well. And there's also been some kind of discussion about how to improve search in general with Evergreen. I know, I don't see her, oh, Cheryl's here. Cheryl at Harney County's talked to me too about, you know, what we can maybe do to help fund development on search work. It was posted recently to the Open ILS listserv. So I'd like to kind of investigate that and see if possibly there's maybe some funding we could push out towards that, or at least kind of look over their plans and see if they're viable for us. Patron info cleanup, I've just been going through cleaning up real pertinent stuff like email addresses, general addresses, just to make sure right now that people are able to receive their notices, especially email notices, and that the email address itself is not a problem. This is also kind of mentioned further in the blog update, blog updates, the weekly system ones. And then I've gone through and worked with the mobile cataloging templates on sage lib.org as well as the catalog to kind of put them more in line with what the devices people are using to view our catalog, which right now are predominantly Apple products, but there's a lot of Galaxy tablets as well, just to make sure that when people are viewing them from devices that are not, desktop computers will be able to see it well. So I've kind of centered things differently. Things should align better than OPAC icons and all that when you're viewing from a mobile device. Should be easier to place a hold. Same work's been done on Sage Lib, just some kind of backend changes as well to facilitate that. And these are kind of discussed in more detail too on those weekly system updates. And at that blog or at that address, you'll also just kind of see any information that I post up that, you know, maybe is a little too long for a listserv post. So that's kind of what I've got there. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Brent. Is there anything for, from the Governance Committee at this meeting? I don't remember.
No, they haven't met yet, so I think with Marie retiring, I think we're going to need to petition the General Listserv for a new Governance Chair.
Okay.
And kind of reactivate that committee work. So we'll work on that between the next, between this meeting and the next.
Okay. Okay. Well, I guess the next thing on our agenda at the moment then is the new council members. We had 26 total responses by the deadline, and several people voted for multiple categories, and so some of those votes had to be discounted because you were supposed to vote just inside your own category. Once that was all cleaned up and accounted for, and I will let anybody see my SurveyMonkey account who wants to, to see the vote, what we ended up with was Anne will be repeating as the Circulating Schools member, and Danine from Enterprise got the position for the Public Libraries under 5,000 residents. Kathy Street got Public Libraries between 5 and 15,000. And Rose Peacock from here in La Grande and Jeff Wavrenik, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that correctly, sorry Jeff, won the positions for the Public Libraries over 15,000. And Mark Peterson, who I don't see here today, got the Academic Libraries position that was open. So congratulations and commiseration for them. And we need to select a new Chair and Vice Chair. So, did anybody want to volunteer? Do we have any nominations? So Erin will volunteer to be the Chair, but her microphone isn't working today. Anybody else wanna fight for that post? It's a lot of fun. Okay. Well, I guess Erin can be the new Chair then, since it's uncontested. Does anybody want to be the Vice Chair? Any volunteers? Anybody wanna nominate somebody who didn't show up today?
Oh, yeah, I think Perry, being the Fiscal Agent, should probably be, he would do a great job, but yeah.
He's a little busy. Oh, he is actually here too, apparently.
Oh.
I don't know when he arrived.
There he is, Perry.
Oh. I'm late joining. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Perry.
Somebody just tried to nominate you for the Vice Chair. I saw that, Erin. All right. Well, since we have somebody who does want to be the new Chair, can I go ahead and, well, she doesn't have a microphone today though. Maybe I can turn the meeting over to Beth. She had some things she wanted to talk about anyway, and then Erin can figure out her microphone for the next time.
Oh, you're doing such a good job, Brian.
I know.
Are you sure you want the job?
Yeah. I'll listen into the rest of it, since I'm the one recording the meeting, but.
Okay.
I would nominate somebody else who's not here, Kathy Street as Vice Chair.
There you go. There you go. Let me check.
I don't know, we need to get approval from her beforehand.
We probably do. I will continue my offer of taking, continuing to handle the minutes, which is normally, I guess, a Vice Chair role.
Yeah. I was not even sure who the Vice Chair was this last year, so.
Well, the Vice Chair was Erin.
Was it? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, then it's good she's willing to be the continuing then. All right, so I made Beth the presenter.
Okay. I had muted my mic, and so I realized that you guys weren't hearing me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. So we have the strategic plan.
Okay. So I do need to find out what we are gonna do, since we have chosen a Chair but not a Vice Chair. Do we want to continue that discussion via email, or? I mean, I don't wanna slow us down, but since we haven't had any nominations or volunteers, we probably need to have some kind of procedure to go forward with getting our Vice Chair positions filled as well. Is everybody okay with me sending out an email and asking for volunteers?
Sounds good.
I will do that, and we can move forward with additional agenda items. Perry had brought up at the last meeting the need for a new strategic plan, so let's have some discussion on how we want to proceed with that. The last time we actually formed a committee to oversee the development of a strategic plan, is that how we want to proceed with this time as well?
I think that's probably wise.
All right, I will, I can also send out an email for volunteers for that committee as well. I think we should establish some kind of timeframe though, so it doesn't get mired in the busyness of everybody's work. Do you recall, Perry, what timeframe our current strategic plan covered? Is it throughout 2000, is it end with June of 2017?
I don't recall.
Okay. Well, I can verify that, but my guess is that the strategic plan will be something that we'll be working on through this fiscal year with implementation in next fiscal year? Is that your sense as well, when you were thinking about it?
Yes, I, not knowing when the last one was effective for, you know, we can have it start after that, or if that one's already expired, we can have it take effect immediately.
Okay, all right. So I will, I will research that and find that out. The other thing, the other question I had was, do we want the strategic plan to cover another three-year period? Or do we want to change up the term length? What's everybody's feelings on the timer strategic plan should cover? Okay, faith is indicating three years. That's kind of where I'm leaning towards, just because if it only covers one year, you're constantly in this cycle of rethinking your plans. I've seen five years is better than five, because five is a little bit too long to really know what's gonna be going on.
It is.
Five is a little long.
And that's bringing that as well from other organizations.
Yeah. So I think three is a good middle-of-the-road in, and certainly achievable. So I would be fine with staying with three years. I just wanted to open it up in case there were other opinions. Rose has a question of, has three years been the standard so far? And we really didn't have a formal strategic plan before we developed the last three-year ones. We certainly had some working plans that, you know, of goals that were set over two or three-year time period, but, so I think, I think in some senses, we haven't really had a standard, but going towards one is a good idea. Well, let's have the committee work on a three-year plan, and if we decide later that we want to change that up, we certainly can. Well, thanks, everybody. The only other agenda item that was emailed to me was the need to clarify the lost-in-transit policy. So I'll go ahead and bring that policy up, and then we can have some discussion on where we need additional clarification, so that possibly the Circ Committee could work on developing new language for this policy, and we'll have a better idea of how to go forward. All right. Does everybody see the lost-in-transit part of the Circ policy up on the screen now? Okay. So, basically, when we developed this policy way back in 2003, we were trying to divide the responsibility of when things are lost in transit, you know, whose responsibility is it at what juncture? And dividing up the responsibility between the owning library and the borrowing library, depending on when it got lost in transit, so that it wasn't always the responsibility of the owning institution, that there, you know, would be some shared responsibility. So, excuse me. So my, I haven't, I guess maybe Maggie or someone else, can you clarify for me, so I don't speak for you, what your concerns are and how this policy could be improved And if you need to say something in chat, I can verbalize, and we can start the discussion. I see the chat message that you were trying to talk on the phone. One of the things that has brought up in the past, and I don't know whether this is what you're trying to address, was the timing on this. Oh, okay. We wanted to understand whether or not others actually built out for lost items. And I think some do, and I think some aren't as proactive at tracking these things, so there may be a time lag. So we talked about, I know in Circ Committee discussions in the past, we've talked about establishing like a six-month timeframe, so that if it hasn't been found or, and maybe that six-month period is wrong, but that was just my recollection, that we needed to have a cutoff time period where things could be resolved, so they weren't just hanging and not being dealt with. Do folks feel that a six-month time is too long? Should we do three months, or is six months a appropriate time lag? So Jeff and Amy are saying six months sounds good. I don't feel like we should take it any longer, because obviously, if something's lost in transit and it's a, it's a item that patrons aren't able to use, we want to do something about replacing it. Okay, so I'm seeing that six months is, a general consensus is being good, and that we don't want it longer than six months. Okay. So, if we establish a, yeah, so Rose is saying waiting six months before billing for the item, yes, that's what we're specific, or indicating our preferences at this point. And this will be helpful in pulling reports. But I think some action needs to happen on these items before the six-month period takes place. Obviously, if something has been lost in transit for, let's say, a month or two months, we need to start asking and checking with other libraries to make sure that, you know, it hasn't gotten put back on the shelf without getting checked in. So I think efforts to locate the item before we bill is a good procedure. So, yeah, running reports at regular intervals to catch as many as we can is a good idea. So, not only should we, I think, lock down some timing issues with billing, I think we should maybe have some language in the lost-in-transit policy to indicate at what point we should be investigating our transits. So what do folks feel? It's, I mean, we can run the transit reports anytime. Should we run, should we start questioning an item if it's been lost in transit for a month? I think we should, but how's everybody feel? So maybe having that as part of the policy that, that we should run these transit reports. Is this something that folks feel that Brent and I should publish? Or do we have libraries running their own transit status reports?
Okay, that would be awesome. So, you know, this could easily be a monthly report that Brent and I could automatically produce and post for folks to check out, you know, their items that are in transit. So that's something he and I can work on. Yeah, good point. It would be uniform, and we're all looking at the same thing. And we could easily break out the report, so it's obvious, you know, the owning institution. And if the receiving institution is blank, that means it's coming back to you. So we'd be able to tell, you know, whether it's in transit to or in transit from the original hold, so we can work on that report and have it come on a monthly basis. So at that point, we need to make it clear also in the policy whose responsibility it is to track it.
There, I think there needs to be the owning- There, I think there needs to be the owning library, the sending and the receiving. The owning and the sending may not be the same, you know? They might be between two non-owning libraries.
You're right, Perry. And there's situations where, um, you know, a hold will come up, and it won't go back necessarily to the owning library right away, because there's, um, sufficient demand for it. So, yeah, the sending library could be different than the owning. So make sure that those are, um, listed in the report as well. Do we feel like it always should be the responsibility of the owning library to send out the email to the listserv, um, in the attempt to locate it? Or should we divide up the responsibility depending on whether it's in transit to or Yeah, I'm thinking that the owning library obviously has more invested in tracking this item down. So I was kind of leaning towards the owning library taking charge of the process. And hopefully, we're not talking about too many items that we have to track down, um, in this case. I think the first month that we do it, and maybe others who have been doing this proactively have a sense for... I haven't seen that many listserv posts of folks looking for items, but maybe they're dealing directly with the library it was supposed to go to.
I wonder if we can create, um, a new status, a lost-in-transit status? Are we able to create statuses?
Yeah, we can create statuses. The only drawback with creating statuses is that there's, um, a loss of automatic procedures that would happen within the Evergreen software. Um, but, yeah, we can easily create a status, um, as long as we're willing to, um, fix it when it needs to be fixed, that kind of thing. So a lost-in-transit, basically, it just means that it goes from being in transit to being lost in transit.
Yeah, if you abort the transit, I mean, I guess you could mark it missing or lost. Lost, doesn't that try to bill it to the last borrower?
Only when you mark it lost by pay, which it wouldn't be in a circulation status at that point. So I don't know that we really could. So it would just really be, uh, it would be just marked lost. And I... Go ahead.
Could the system automatically, after a certain length of time that it's in transit status, change that status?
It could change it to... Yeah, we could create a, um, a trigger that looks at it in transit for so long. Um, what would we ideally want to change the status to? I mean, because it could be just lost, or we could just say missing. I think I've encouraged more people to mark it missing than lost.
Well, could we, could we set up that lost-in-transit status to do something like that, so that it identifies it completely as a separate issue?
Yeah, we could, and it'd be easier to pull reports that way.
Exactly. That's what I was thinking.
Mm-hmm.
Tracking it all together seems like it would be easier that way.
Okay.
And if the system does it at a certain interval, then that automates that process too.
So, um, at what point do we want it to trigger the lost-in-transit status? After a month?
Well, I'm thinking if we're talking about tracking at that point, that that's when it should be triggered.
Yeah.
Hey, Beth, sorry. I'm just trying to get an idea of what's, what's being discussed here. Are you talking about, like, kind of building an action trigger to trigger a new...
Yes. It would be an action trigger that we would build.
Okay. All right.
So we'd have to do some testing with it. Um, it's, it's something we haven't done before, but I believe it's possible. So, um, we could look into that and, um, let everybody know if we find out for some reason we can't do it. But that area is pretty powerful.
The system will give us data on the transit time, um, on average.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, we, yeah, we can, we can give, um, all sorts of information on, in reports on, on transit data, and we could even, I mean, it's easy enough to create a report that queries on transit time.
I mean, maybe before we proceed with the one-month timeline, we can look at the time sent to arrival, to make sure that that's going to be a reasonable time.
Okay. Yeah, I can do that. It's, um, I pulled a report a while back on, and computed average transit times. And we were definitely, you know, a lot less than that month time period, you know? Most of them, it was a week to two weeks for the outlying site. So I, I think a month is reasonable, but we could certainly pull the reports and make sure that, um, that's still a good time period.
Okay.
And at the same time, Brent and I can look into how easy it would be to make this action trigger.
Yeah, the... Sorry, Beth, this is Brent. My only idea with that is that, um, at some point, I think there's, the libraries are still going to have to, you know, kind of find these items, so they're, uh, even if it's happening automatically, I just want people to be aware of things, you know, that they were in transit and then they're lost. There's still going to have to be, you know, an accounting of that. Um, I don't know if I'm making myself real clear here, but, um, I just want to make sure that they don't go, you know, to that lost status, and then it just, you know, kind of gets lost to the wind.
Yeah, there's still going to be, needing to be some, um, action on behalf of the libraries. So we're just trying to make that data more, um, easily retrievable and acted upon. So, um, given the feedback that we've had today, Brent, do you think the circulation committee is a good place to, to, um, to work on a new draft of this policy that's more complete?
Yeah. I mean, just even looking at it right now, I just, I think it'd be worth, you know, breaking it up a little clearer into, you know, what happens when it's lost in transit, as opposed to lost by, you know, circulation means, um, just because it's kind of two different scenarios. Um, yeah, that's totally a good, uh, work project for the circulation committee.
Okay.
That would be great.
Would they be able to work on a draft before our next meeting, or do you think it would take a little bit longer?
Yeah. Um, she's not here, but I was looking back through the minutes in the circulation committee meetings, and Kathy Street did mention that she would, uh, work with me to get that set up, and I'm totally 100% on board with anyone else that's currently at the user council meeting also, um, pitching in, since I'd like to get people's opinions that, you know, are working, uh, with these policies at their libraries. Yeah. Okay, I got Rose, too.
All right. That's awesome. Thanks. Well, hearing no other agenda items, um, is everybody in agreement for ending the council
That's fine with me.
Sure.
Well, thanks, everybody, and congratulations to the new council members, and I look forward to working with everyone. I hope everybody has a good day.
Thanks, Beth. And thanks, Ryan.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Erin, for, for not making me stick around longer.
Yes, thank you very much, Erin. All right. Take care, everybody.